Julia, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Good. Hi, y'all.
Hi, Julia.
Okay, whoops. Good evening. Thank you for joining us. This is the September 15th meeting of the Sutter Creek City Council. Will, not Will, Aaron, can you please do a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Riordan.
Here.
Councilmember Gunsman.
Here.
Councilmember Swift.
Here.
Councilmember Feist.
Here.
And Councilmember Cirque.
Here, attending by soon due to medical condition.
Okay, I'm gonna open, oh, can you all join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to open the public forum. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items not appearing on the agenda. Comments may not exceed five minutes. In accordance with state law, however, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The city council may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may request staff to report back at a future meeting on the matter. Would anyone care to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Steve?
Good evening. This is Steve Christensen. This evening, I would like to talk about affordable housing. My question to the members of the city council would be simply, are you interested in actually building affordable housing here in Sutter Creek? If the answer is yes, I would like to know what your plans are. If the answer is no, I'd like to hear your reasons for disagreeing with that. Personally, I think that affordable housing, like apartments, which we already have here in Sutter Creek, would be beneficial to the city. The apartments would bring in property, would bring in property tax, a lot more than just a vacant lot. So I think there's advantage there for the city. I think also that the apartments that would be affordable would be attractive to those people who work in the county but live in, live in Lowdy, Galt, Valley Springs, and commute every day to the county. They work in the administration building in Jackson, the hospital, and some with the school district. People who then would be able to live in these affordable homes would then be able to spend their paycheck here in Amador County instead of the valley with Galt and Lowdy and places like that. So they would have their salaries, they would shop in local stores, they would eat in local restaurants, and they would help the economy of Sutter Creek and Amador County. So I'm looking at, those would be my target audience. There are apartments over in Jackson right now where the waitlist is two and a half years. We definitely have a problem with not having enough affordable homes for people to live in, and the rents are becoming sky high. I remember when I was 18, a lot of my friends, I can remember that far back. A lot of my friends couldn't wait to get out of their house and get an apartment and get away from mom and dad. How many of you have kids who are 18 who can do that now? There's no place for them to move to that they can afford. So another thing is that the largest growing homeless population in Amador County is people who are over 65. These are people who are living on fixed incomes in apartments, in mobile homes, where the rent has gone up, where they can no longer afford to live there. So these people who are 65 and older are living in their cars. This would be another group of people that I would hope that affordable housing would be able to take in and give them the house that they deserve in their retirement years. So I think that there are, and this would not be a cost to the city, it would be the contractors who would then pick up, would buy the land and build on it. It would be beneficial, though, to the city of Sutter Creek with increase of property tax and people spying things and an increase to sales tax. So I think this would be a win-win situation. I am asking that you think about how you would answer my question. Are you interested in building affordable housing here in Sutter Creek? If the answer is yes, again, I would like to find out what you're trying to do, and I would be willing to work with you and help you achieve your goals. If you are not interested, I'd like to hear the reasons why also. Thank you very much.
There are no zoomers.
That takes us to the city managers' report.
Yeah, good evening, council. Just super quick, kind of responding to the speaker. Our supportive housing project for low income seems to be moving forward. They went through a couple of rounds. I think they got their funding in this last round, which has been the delay. And they recently started submitting site plans and things to the city. But I don't, I don't know the timeline yet, so. If I, you guys probably recall better than I do, I think it was 39 affordable apartments for, for low-income individuals. So just a quick update, going along our city priorities here. In terms of roadways, you know, we've had disruptions. We've been working on the sewer pipes under the streets. We're nearing completion of that project. And then, I don't know if Councilmember Riordan, you were gonna talk in your comments, but it sounds like potentially Sutter Hill Road may get funding for paving in the next cycle. At least it was discussed in a positive way at ACTC. In terms of the budget, we're getting ready to submit the grant, I think we talked about at the last council meeting, for the Monteverdi Museum repairs. That submission is due at the end of the month. We've also started evaluating Community Development Block Grant, if that could be applicable to our wastewater plant, and there were some changes in the packet to add some language that would let that potentially happen. Just today, we posted an RFP for a new city auditor. We've been with the current auditing firm for the number of years where I think we're required to go back out and at least post the RFP. And then, again, we continue to roll out the electronic timesheets, which includes a HR portal where employees can see their vacation time, get their W2s, handle that kind of thing. And then, a lot of wastewater. So tonight, major discussion on the wastewater plant construction agreement. We actually, Dan and his team replaced a sewer line on Eureka Street, which we did primarily in-house. And then the INI work with Shoraco is moving to Fife Field Alley. And then there'll be some kind of final punch list items that will go around and get completed. And then, on Henderson, as I told, shared with you last week, we're looking at changing the construction methodology to this cured-in-place pipe. We needed to do some more camera work, and now we have to get engineering approval from the Department of Damp Safety before we can proceed, and we think it's gonna be about a one week hit to the schedule. No, should be no impact. And then, in economic development, I was at an economic development conference last week. It included some people from the governor's office that are funding this jobs-first initiative across the state. And it was pretty interesting. It was all rural communities. It's the seven Sierra Mountain counties in the state. A lot of focus on recreation and tourism, on the use of natural lands and agriculture, clean energy, and, and medical workforce training, and there was actually pretty extensive discussion about the need to have workforce training for medical assistants, registered nurses, as well as physicians, attracting them to the area. And then there's what they call foundational elements, which is where our grant is, which is things that are supporting business generally, like general workforce training or supporting entrepreneurship. And some of these photos, after the meeting one day, I went to the top picture, there's the Bishop Business Resource Center. So they took an abandoned storefront in downtown, and they turned it into a place to help people starting businesses, but they also have their Chamber of Commerce meet there. There's a conference room and some meeting rooms. They're kind of just getting going, so it was good to make some connections to see what they had done. They spent about $80,000 renovating that space, and so a lot of ways, I think, with the grammar school, we're in very, very good shape in terms of physical facilities. And then the bottom two are some just pictures of the various meetings that were going on. And then on the day-to-day side, it was in your packet last time, and I forgot if I talked about it very much, but again, there was this offer to donate money for air conditioning in the auditorium. So again, we're gonna work on a quote, and, you know, I don't want to lose momentum around that. There was initial donation, I can't remember Steve's last name, do you guys? Price, you know, was willing to donate a chunk of money, but also help raise larger amounts. We had our concert in the park, what was it, last Friday, a week, a week ago, two weeks ago, Friday. I think it was very well attended. It was a good concert. Thank you to the Amador Arts. And then this week, we have an ARSA meeting on Thursday. We have a finance ad hoc meeting tomorrow, which we moved to 3:30. And then on Thursday night, I'm gonna present to the Amador City Council on our wastewater plans. And then I just want to let you guys know, I'm gonna be out next week. And then I want to, to share some information with you. I know there's been some discussion. Actually had some specific language the police chief wanted me to share. But we do have evidence of attempted arson on, it's actually the morning of the 16th attempt was made to burn down the auditorium. This, this is an ongoing active investigation, and you know, the, there's evidence of a suspicious fire, but we also have video evidence that indicates the fire was intentionally set. And so just, just so everybody understands, our police department's been working with Sutter Creek Fire Team, the Amador County DA's office, Amador County Sheriff's Department. We've been using the California Department of Justice for forensic and video enhancement. And the Sacramento County High Tech Task Force has been helping, as well as ATF. And so, you know, based on this information, we believe that potentially there are those in the community that could help provide additional information. And so we're gonna be offering a $5,000 reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the person responsible. And as well as the arrest and conviction of anybody who may have aided that person before or after the crime. So there'll be notices going out either later tonight or tomorrow. But I just wanted council to be aware, we haven't really talked about it much because it is an ongoing investigation. But it's, people have been very active behind the scenes.
Tom, is there any plan to provide any photo evidence that the public might be able to help with identification?
Not at this point. I think there's a feeling with the DA that we don't want to taint the community in that way. So we're really looking for people who have knowledge that can come forward. So a little bit of a downer, but again, we're making progress. And then, on a happier note, at community events, Feast of the Foundry is coming up, and then just a bunch of stuff in October. And then for your upcoming agendas, with the planning commission denied two short-term rentals. I know one was appealed, was the second. So appeal, it's gonna be brought to you at the next council meeting. And then we're looking for some updates on, there's trench ordinance under review and striping plans. And then the second meeting in October will be the Q1 financial update. We're getting very close on the next study. I'm hoping we'll make this meeting. And when we get to that study, we will look at the increase in fees. Tonight's item is really just a report on what happened in the past year, so we will have two separate kind of conversations around that. And then we are looking to bring a discussion back about short-term rentals in general. And then in November, Jim will come here to give an update on the police department. And we, we may be able to bring Sutter Creek Ranch. That one will depend on timing with the planning commission. And that's it.
Is the trench ordinance the same thing as the dig months?
Yeah, it's to protect roads that have been paved, to limit the ability to dig up a road that was recently paved.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions for Tom from the council?
Nope.
Public? Okay, moving on to the approval of the minutes.
Modifications, I would go ahead and move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Can you do a roll call, please, Will?
Yes, I'm Aaron, but that's okay. It's all right. Councilmember Cirque.
Abstained.
Councilmember Riordan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gunsman.
Aye.
Councilmember Swift.
Aye.
Councilmember Feist.
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry, Aaron.
Motion passes 4-0.
Will's in my line of safe. Maybe you need to move. Ornance is in public hearing. We're gonna start with accepting the annual impact fee report for 2425.
Yeah, Mason's gonna come up to the podium, but again, this is a state law that just says we have to report annually how these dedicated impact fees are spent. So like, like I said earlier, it's nothing to do with changing those fees. It's really about accepting this annual report.
Yeah, and I don't have much to say about it. We bring this annually. The expenditures were budget items for that, but that fiscal year that we had all discussed and agreed upon, some key ones, Parks and Rec, we did some work on the decomposed granite and the pavers over here at the park. Prior to the duck race, that was a budget item that paid for that. PD got a car. That was another budget item from that year that we used these ones for. Those are just a couple of examples. And then we did have one house built that this last fiscal year up by California Drive compared to the prior fiscal year, we had, I want to say, four or five buildings built, which kind of had a little bit of a spike in activity for revenue, but this, this year it kind of settled down. And that house was built in Q3 of last year, I want to say. It was towards the end of the year. So this year, we already have a duplex being built. So we just got those impact fees a week or two ago, so we're already off to a strong start for the year. Just to give you a little bit of an update for current fiscal year, but yeah, I don't really have much else to say. The data's here. If you have any questions, happy to answer if I can, or come back and give you answers if I don't know.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, I have a few. More, there are more observations than anything. At the bottom of page four of the report, the last sentence under, traffic mitigation fee. That sentence just seems to be truncated and with no ending, the very last sentence.
Oh, yeah, it does continue on page five. It says, "Traffic mitigation fee continued." I think it was just a formatting thing. Indirect and cumulative impacts of new development projects.
Okay, I got it.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, it just said the heading came up again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then on, on page, page one, at the very top, a what are impact fees? And it says, "Fees may be used for the purchase, construction, expansion, rehabilitation, or acquisition of public facilities." Then on page four.
Okay.
At the very top, description of capital facilities fees, and it's described as "The CFF program is used to finance the acquisition, construction, and improvement of public facilities as a revol, as a result of new development." So there's, it seems like there's an inconsistency there. Improvement is missing from the first description on page one, and the words "expansion and rehabilitation" are missing on the description on page four.
I see what you're saying.
So, and that brings up my question about air conditioning for, when this says city hall, what are we specifically, are we talking about the auditorium? Are we talking about the front office of the, portion of the auditorium? Are we talking about a new city hall?
Well, I can tell you that city hall is frigid when we want it to be, and it can be as warm as we need it to be too. So I wouldn't say city hall fee is the correct one to use for the auditorium. RAC in the front.
This fee was created to contemplate building a new city hall, but.
It seems like a pipe dream to me, but.
Yeah, so in our current Nexus study, we are combining several of these just into a facility.
Okay, that's, all right, that's kind of where I'm headed.
Fair point, yeah.
And then, since the front of the auditorium is a facility, or the auditorium is a facility, do we have an opportunity to use these capital facility fees for, and we said it's used for an improvement. Would air conditioning be an improvement, fall into that category of an improvement possibly?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that was all I had.
I will definitely look at the language between page one and four. We'll clarify, yeah, exactly. I think there's just a gap there we can fill. But this will probably be a totally different-looking report after the Nexus study. We'll probably have to update a lot, so.
The, the other question I had was about, we talked about updating these fees, and that's gonna be addressed in the Nexus study. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be a pretty thorough review of all this, and I think we'll see a lot of change.
Okay.
So take this with a, I mean, this is good data, but take this with a grain of salt, just because next year it'll probably look a lot different, so.
Okay.
Consolidating a lot.
That's all I had.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
I.
I think this is a public hearing, right?
I had my hand up. Aaron?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Julia, I made a mistake. It's a public hearing, so if you have a question for Mason, go ahead and shoot. Then I'll open the public hearing, and after the public.
Yes, okay, actually, it was a question for Aaron, and it kind of maybe meshed in with what Jim was getting at, but I also had made a note of the, the fund balance for the city hall. But if that's gonna be more broadly described or worked on on the Nexus study, then I guess I'll reserve. But it seemed whether it, is it, is it relevant to city hall, capital facilities, is city hall just semantics for the auditorium? Or how broad can it go?
I think this is just a report based on the categories we have, what was collected and what was spent, and then we're gonna review all the categories and the rates and everything else in the Nexus study.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and open the public forum, or the public hearing. Would anyone care to make a comment in the public hearing? Do we need a vote to close the public hearing?
No, just close it, I think.
I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'd entertain a motion to accept this report.
So moved.
A second.
I just want to clarify with, with Jim's comments on consolidating the language on those two paragraphs. Easy peasy.
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Aaron, will you do a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Cirque.
Aye.
Councilmember Riordan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gunsman.
Aye.
Councilmember Swift.
Aye.
Councilmember Feist.
Okay.
Sorry, motion passes 5-0.
And we're gonna go to item B, wastewater treatment plant design-build contract.
Yeah, so it's kind of the main item of the night. I just have a few, I thought I'd give kind of an overview. And then we do have Moses from Schneider Electric is here, Bill Slunter from Hydroscience. And I know it's a very big contract, and you guys also got an update during the week. But let me just frame it a little bit. First of all, this is a major milestone for the city. This is not a minor project. Parts, portions of our current wastewater plant have been there since 1948, so this is a 30, 40-year project that you guys are considering tonight. And it's been a long history to get here. I think, as most of you know, we've had a long history with INI issues, you know, leakages in the collection system, plan upgrades, and then a lot of complexity around the ARSA disposal system, you know, over the years, disagreements, lawsuits. So the city has gone through a planning process, you know, we have a master plan. We've, we've done some engineering evaluations. We, we had the preferred alternative of a tertiary plant that would dispose in the Sutter Creek. So, you know, staff has evaluated options. We've given you guys updates, and you've given us direction. We decided to pursue a design-build contract using the energy savings procurement process, which is California Code 4217. We hired Hydroscience to be our owner advocate, to basically ask, act as the city's engineer in the construction of the plant because of their specific expertise. We issued the RFP, and we went through an interview and selection process, and we've selected Schneider Electric. And then, since then, we've spent probably a little bit more than the last month negotiating the contract that's. And then since then, we've spent probably a little bit more than the last month negotiating the contract that's before you tonight. I tried to summarize some of the key things in the contract. There's a lot of there, and you guys feel free to ask questions about any of it. At a high level, you know, there's three phases. Probably more typically, there would have been two, where the city would have done some of this assessment upfront on our own nickel. But we decided to include the assessment phase in the design build contract. So there's assessment, then there's the design and the construction. And then within the design, there's kind of two steps there. There's a thirty percent design and a sixty percent design. When we hit the sixty, that, so the first phase, phase one, is specified to last two hundred and forty days and costs about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that will work through a lot of the technical assessment issues in terms of the site for the plant, the regulation, so FEMA clearance, CEQA, all that kind of stuff. Then we go to design, we get that thirty percent, sixty percent. Then we get to what is called the guaranteed maximum price, GMP. And we will negotiate a second agreement, which will come to you guys, which should be the construction agreement itself, based on the design. Within this contract tonight, there are some special sections. There's one on long lead items. That's primarily expected to be the solar and the battery, which you guys approved. We don't really anticipate there will be many other things, so you know, it's an important clause, but we don't think it's going to be used that much. There's a very long list of general conditions. Got a lot of help from Bill and from Derek as we went through that section. There's a lot of complexity within design build, I guess, about how you handle change orders. So there's a lot of clauses around that. And then also things that might impact that guaranteed maximum price, which is, you know, it's supposed to be the price. If you don't make any changes, that's the guarantee. But you know, you have to anticipate if we did want to make a change, or if we get that price, and then we find that we can't get something for two years and the price changes, there's, there's ways to deal with that in the contract. We also, in the update we sent you out last Friday, added added important clauses to help us qualify for federal and state grants. We, if we do decide to pursue those, there will be a lot more of that in the construction agreement. And there's a lot of real costs with some of those grants, so we will evaluate the ROI and it may be, there may be a situation where we get a grant for a portion of it, and we might want to split that off into a separate agreement so that the entire construction agreement isn't subject to the same conditions. And then there's a lot of stuff in here about regulatory compliance. So that's the contract. The second big document was the scope of work focusing on phase one. And so there was a lot really about the regulatory issues, FEMA, CEQA, the water board requirements. I would say that, you know, we've had a lot of discussion on the team. You know, we're really trying to limit spending a lot of time and money looking at alternatives unless we determine that the primary approach is not going to work. So I think, I tried to say in the staff report, we're trying to be biased towards action rather than over planning if we think it'll save the city money. And then there is a list of optional items, and we will kind of determine in phase one and possibly going into phase two, whether we think we need these things and whether we can afford some of these things. And then in the staff report, there was also a section on risk. And again, I would, I would just stress that this design build approach means that we are starting without all the answers, and I know that can be uncomfortable for council, but that's part of the process. We're going into this design in a collaborative way where we will be meeting every other week with not just Schneider, but their team of experts, their subcontractors. And everybody's going to be motivated to find solutions, design something that's going to work. But you know, they're, they're basically unknowns right now, and part of this is a plan to figure out those unknowns. And it's in these different areas, regulatory risk, you know, the floodplain is a big one, and we can talk about that some more as we get into it. Funding plan. And then even things like, you know, will the community understand what we're doing and why, and making sure we communicate the plan? And, and then potential design risk, which we think we have a good handle on, but just trying to highlight areas that we need to dig into more. And then I did collect a bunch of questions from council members. And I don't know if we need to answer all of these questions one by one, but we can kind of go through them. I guess before we go to this, let's ask maybe Bill, do you want to make a few comments?
Sure, thank you, Tom. I think that was a very good, complete summary. You know, we were first looking at the wastewater problem at the city way back in twenty twelve with another master plan update in twenty fourteen. We've been assisting with the regulatory matters on the RSA side, which you're well aware of. So a solution, a wastewater solution is a long time coming, and the issues are complicated, and they require some analysis and development in order to talk to the regional board or talk to FEMA and advance all of those items. So through our own experience, you know, firms have been in business since the late nineties. We found that the progressive design build model really is catching on in, in public works and cities that have similar challenges, where they need to sort of work on multiple aspects of the problem simultaneously and try to understand what that means for schedule, what that means for cost. And so we found that bringing together the contractor and the engineer as a cohesive team with a very strong sense of, shared sense of collaboration is the best way to expeditiously solve that problem and have confidence in the answers we're getting and confidence to move to the next step. And so this is an ESCO variant of the progressive design build model that allows to package and defer the costs and finance those, which is very appealing. But what we're most excited about is having, you know, a strong team, strong engineer, contractor, and the lead ESCO firm that are going to work collaboratively on developing that definition, the permitting constraints, the FEMA issues. And then we get to checkpoints that are strategically planned through the the structuring of the, the project, four phases where at each checkpoint, we know where we are standing and whether we're confident to move forward. So we are, we're very excited to see this move forward and, and have a path and a team that can do it.
And then Moses, I don't know if you want to make a few comments?
Good evening, City of Sutter Creek Council. Thanks so much for having me here. It's a pleasure. And Tom, Bill, Dan, thanks so much for the collaboration and for the partnership that we had over the past few months regarding this process. So I think between Tom and Bill, they very well covered it. We have, we're looking forward to working together on this project. What we're really excited about is the complexity of this project. We all recognize, which is a good thing to recognize, it's not a straightforward, it's not a cookie cutter project. That's why we, when we start looking into the potential solutions, the experts we need on the team, what's involved, the community, we try to put a team together that we feel it will address the city's needs, understanding the limitations from all angles around the city. We understand the existing infrastructure or our current, current understanding of the existing infrastructure for the wastewater treatment plant. Where the wastewater treatment plant, I would call it a water reclamation facility, need to be, and the funding limitations also, you know, surrounding all of that. So we're looking forward to working together of understanding all of these aspects, coming from regulation standpoint, understanding if there's any major areas that will affect this during the assessment phase of the project. And then in parallel, working with the city of identifying the funding of the project and the funding sources of the project. I did not go into the details. There's a lot of details, and I will be happy to answer any questions or any background about what we do as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, guys. So I would suggest maybe, maybe a quick round of technical questions, and then at some point, I don't know when you want to go to the public.
Do you want to go a couple of slides back? One more, right there.
Here?
No, next. Maybe see if we have questions on this quick outline, and then on the scope of work, and you know, take it that way. And then I think it's a good idea probably to look at the questions you collected from us in case they're duplicated.
I think so too, looking at those.
For instance, on this, this slide, the phasing, the first planning phase. It looks like in the scope of work and the, the contract, we haven't determined yet if we're going to use, I don't know which one of you to look at. If we're going to use chlorine or UV. Obviously, that would have big implications for the energy used and creek discharge and everything. So is that all of that kind of thing going to be determined in that first phase would be my first question.
Yes, the intent is to weigh both of those alternatives, including a technical evaluation, discussions with the water board and involvement with the Water Quality Control Board consultant that's on board, the, the team, to look at all of those issues. In general, UV is more energy intensive and a little more maintenance intensive, but it has been the standard for this type of discharge and is commonly used because it best meets water quality requirements. However, in recent times, there have been some innovations around going back to chlorine use and operating in a certain way with a very low dose and some onsite validation to show that it can also meet those requirements. And if we are successful, that will be a less costly, less intensive way to operate. So the UV is sort of the default for a plant like this, for a discharge like this, chlorine, a specific type of chlorine use is an innovative alternative that will be weighed. It should be before phase one is complete.
That's the first phase.
That is a goal.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm going to, instead of asking a technical question, I need to start a little bit higher level just for a minute. Because Bill, and I joked with you before the meeting about how important I think your role is here in being the city representative. Because in reviewing this contract, the city representative is a key person at the most important parts and throughout this process. And if that goes south, we're in trouble. So I was wondering if you could just tell us a little bit about your experience working in that role specifically, and what some of those challenges have been and how you've worked that out. And have you ever worked with ESCO doing that? So that's, it's just such a, a big job.
Understood.
Yeah.
So I've been with Hydroscience since two thousand and five. One of our principals, senior project manager on wastewater projects. I have a lot of progressive design build experience. It has been more on the consultant side. But it has involved wastewater projects much like this. And so from that side of the coin, we've learned a lot as far as what works well, what doesn't. The nuances of an agreement that has the right balance of risk allocation and so forth. I have not previously dealt with an ESCO project. It's a relatively new variant that's come to light, and a few public agencies have used that. And we did spend a lot of time talking to some of those references that have worked with Schneider in the past and the other competitor about those nuances and studying, you know, boilerplate agreements and some of the particularities of, of that approach. But at its core, it is progressive design build. What's different is, you know, the type of lead firm and some of the the financing aspects, and it's a different part of public contract code that's being used.
And Bill, do you anticipate being in this role over the years that it's take? I mean, nobody knows what the future is going to bring, but what is your current thinking with regards to that?
I'm, I'm in it for the long haul. I'm not retiring anytime soon.
Okay.
We hope to, you know, we have a pretty aggressive schedule too. So the idea is ten years from now, the plant's been running for a few years. And yeah, that's my plan is to stick it out for sure.
Great, I appreciate it.
You've been on the other side of the table?
On the owner's representative side, primarily in the construction management role, yes.
I'm going to hop onto that with another question for Bill. Throughout this, your, your position is indicated as a checkpoint for a lot of things. I know we did a contract with Hydroscience, but maybe this is a question for Tom. How does it work with Bill's availability, you know, and access through this whole process and you know, what are costs incurred along the way?
Yeah, no, we are, we are paying him to be our owner advocate at an hourly rate. He also is a, I don't want to say junior, but a less senior engineer that, that for instance, is doing a lot of work on Henderson right now. So.
We're a forty person firm. We have offices in Sacramento and Berkeley, work together as one company. So any of those resources that I need, I won't be the only person. I'll be the point of contact, but I have resources with a wide range of experience that'll pull in at various milestones, you know, depending on what the need is.
And that workload that you anticipate, that's something that you've been able to communicate with Tom, and then Tom, you've grocked that whole workload, and is that the dollar number you're using for budget? It could also, it just occurs to me, it could be a whole other big chunk of money, and I'm just concerned that we've accounted for it appropriately.
Yeah, I mean, we've been attempting to, like, Bill's been working with us on the RSA side for quite a while now. So I think we've, I think we've got a pretty good established kind of working relationship. Yeah, we talk about the hours and we kind of adjust accordingly.
And it's a, I'd say a partnership, but we're not, you know, we're helping the city, we're representing them, providing guidance. I think it's a shared effort that will work out over time as we have been even through this process. I didn't do everything, Tom did a lot, Dan assisted. Yeah, it's, it's just group effort to basically make sure that we're helping move this along and providing our expertise.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill, for all your work with the water, joint water balance. And, you know, we have been working with you, and it has been very successful, so. Put you on the hot seat, put you on the hot seat.
That's okay. That's what I'm here for.
This kind of segue, so I'm going to go ahead and roll into it. So I I want to know through this process, and I don't know if you, you want to answer this all at once, or if you want to keep this in mind as we go through the contract and probably more importantly, the scope of work. But what responsibilities do the city staff have? And are we prepared for that? Do we need any additional training? Do we need any additional people? Who, who's it going to be? And what, you know, we're going to spend a great deal of money to do this great big thing, but I guess I want to know how much of our city staff is going to be used and pulled away from other city projects, or you know, did we hire this firm to do the project? And there were a couple of things that jumped out at me, you know, when I was reading through. That the city staff is, is, has a duty to inspect materials delivered. You know, smaller things like that. I don't know if that's Mason. I don't know, you know, if that's you, Dan. I don't know if it's the public works guys. But are we ready for that? And how much of an impact will it have on the rest of the city operations?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. I'm not sure I can answer all of it now. I mean, we are hiring Schneider to kind of provide overall management, and they've, they pulled together a team that, you know, we saw during the interview process. And then I think, again, Bill and Bill's company can provide us expertise where we need it. And then certainly Dan and his team are also going to be pretty heavily involved where it makes sense. pretty heavily involved where it makes sense. So I don't have a great answer for you right now, but like we've already started trying to make trade-offs in terms of doing things at the wastewater plant that would be short-term and we may not need to do. And right, so I would expect, you know, George to be involved on, kind of onsite.
Kind of an example of what I think Claire is talking about. I think Claire, one of the things that occurred to me in that light was I was reading more about the oversight required in the certified payrolls on a bi-weekly basis or whatever. And that's a piece of work and it's a very important piece of work. There's a lot of things that can happen within that payroll that could land the city in hot water if it's not handled properly. No one anticipates that. Nobody wants that. But it's the kind of thing that unless we have proper and timely oversight on that kind of activity, that's the kind of thing that makes me nervous in a contract this big and complicated. So on that one specific, did you have any chance to think about that one?
So obviously being a multi-phase project, starting with project definition, then design, and then an agreement for construction with a guaranteed price. An element as we get closer to that is going to be to finalize exactly how we're going to handle construction oversight is to, to extend using forces that we have. It's, it's a function we could provide. We do as part of our business, construction management and inspection. So we could put together a, a small team to support me to make visits to the site to review those payrolls. I think we've left it a little bit open exactly how we're going to staff that, knowing that it's definitely something that will need to be staffed.
Does it start in phase one or only in phase three with construction?
Phase three.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah. The only, the only activities in phase two that, that involve prevailing wage are surveying and geotech.
Fair enough.
Which is pretty routine.
Yep.
But yeah, we do have some time and the multi-phase process there will definitely need to, will need to keep ahead of the next phase and finalize that.
Julia has a question as well.
Pause one second, Julia. Moses is perched on a seat. It looks like he has some input to that too. Can he just sit over here in Julia's seat so he has a microphone should he need it?
Want to join us? I think we should make him stand.
Sorry, Julia, go ahead.
You probably need to turn it on though.
I think it's on, yes. So I just want to add regarding the staffing and that's the beauty, and correct me if I'm wrong, also Bill and Tom, that's the beauty of the progressive design build or the collaborative approach. So unlike other projects where siloed out and two, two-sided teams, team or teams, right? We work with our clients and also the, that's the model allows us to do work all as one team, as an extended arm of the city. Meaning we understand how big the project is. A lot of other public agencies, they approach these type of projects ESCO progressive design build because it allows them to hand for the shortage of staff. If they have shortage of staff, it will allow them for companies like ours to support the cities on these functions on a, on a good faith. I just want to mention that on the collaborative side of things.
Yep.
So we have all mutual goal for this project to go to construction and go successfully to construction.
Julia? Yeah, I want, I kind of want to mesh all of what Dan said and Claire said. You know, my, my gut feeling is I'm scared to death of this, but it's unnecessary. And I also believe in moving forward. My biggest concern overlaying is the financial teamwork. We're talking about a financial advisor and then hiring an expert to also represent Sutter Creek at the regional state and water boards. At what point, even though I understood from Bill that the bills really won't start coming in until the construction phase, yet to move ahead on the first two phases without a clear idea, I think of who's minding the bank? I, I would, and, and I share the same sentiment as Claire's. How much is our city staff? Is Mason going to be required, you know, to be pulled away to be in this? So the Marsa sickly is who is responsible for the financial oversight? The team, a financial advisor? Who?
So, I mean, when you say financial oversight, there's, I think you're talking about the expense, expense tracking, making sure wasting money. I think that's largely going to be me and Bill. Bill certainly kind of a detailed engineering level. But the other part of the funding is assembling the source of funds. And I think I tried to put in the report, I kind of see that it's going to be a big focus for me. Schneider has some grant writers and funding assistance. We were just talking today whether we need to hire a financial assistance firm or not. I think, you know, we've, we've shared, we've talked with I Bank. It's a low interest rate loan. If that goes through, we may not need a traditional financial advisor who would typically help us get a bond, issue a bond. You know, that can be expensive. They, they take a percentage of that funding. I think the only reason we would go down that route is if the I Bank process fell through for some reason. So in my mind, it's going to be a focus on kind of maximizing our ability to work with I Bank and then looking for other grants to go on top of that.
But in the plan, it specifically mentions the, the need to hire a financial advisor. And what would that, I, I'm not clear on the financial advisor, would that be the role of I Bank? And.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain we will hire a financial advisor. I think we need to find the right kind of advisor. A traditional one would want to issue a bond and again, I, I don't think we're going to need that. I think we're going to have one form of debt, which if, if the I Bank goes through, then we don't really need a bond expert. But what we do need is to make sure we're finding all the applicable grants and any other kind of creative ways we could finance this. I forget if I shared with you guys, there's a, and I can't remember the name of the process. There's a way to have a transfer property tax for infrastructure. So we looked into that. It would mean the county would get less property tax and the city would get more to pay for the wastewater plant. But you can only do that to support development and growth and you have to demonstrate that say the investment in the wastewater plant allowed the city to grow. So that, that option may not work, but there's, there may be other kind of innovative ideas like that. So it may not be a traditional financial advisor, but if we find somebody that we think can really add value, you know, again, I see the funding puzzles, the next piece that we work on in parallel with the design.
Doesn't the role of, of communicating and working with the, the water board fall on Schneider and, and your people?
Yes.
As, and as part of this.
Yes.
Included in this contract.
Correct.
Cause I think that was mentioned by someone about who's gonna, who are we going to hire to, to deal with the water board?
Yeah, Moses, maybe we're talking about the, the team of experts, that their specialties that you've proposed.
Yes, sure. So during the RFP phase, we put, we did not just put a team. We, based on our understanding of the cities, the wastewater treatment plant and the whole situation, the regional as well, the, the regional situation as well, we put a, a team of few experts. We have our team Schneider Electric, which is the overall. And then under our umbrella, we will have Wallace Group Engineering, which they have dealt with similar size technologies projects. So we thought their expertise will be very worthwhile for your situation.
You worked with them before?
On the person, we have, on the personal level, we have.
But on a project like this?
Not on a project.
It just happened to be one of my questions.
Yes. So it is on the person, we have some folks within our Schneider team. They have worked with.
Relationships.
Yes, correct. And then from permitting standpoint, we have two, or I would say three source of permitting. There is, the plant is currently in the floodplain, as you all know. So we, we partnered with a firm that is very well-known for the type of work they do. Small firm, but that's the, the only thing they do FEMA work and the owner has been, she, she was, she worked for Caltrans as well, which, which could be also a big role in, in what happens here as well. So we put that firm, they have done projects in cities adjacent, also related to FEMA, adjacent to the city of Sutter Creek as well. From water board or regional water board engagement, we hired or were, were going to work and were partnered with the company that we are currently working with on other projects. It's called RBI, Robertson, Brian. They are very well-known in what they do. They end, they out, they deal with the water board on all kinds of projects really. Mainly in the Central Valley and Sacramento area. That's their sweet spot of expertise. And then regarding the Sequo, also we have partnered with a local, a local firm as well, which we are also working with. That's all they do, environmental and Sequo work in this region. It's called Montrose Environmental. So this is really the core team from consulting engineering standpoint.
And then Clois, Cloisina?
Yes. So also we have, we have partnered with Cloisina, which are the proposed technology supplier for the city of Sutter Creek, which is a packaged wastewater treatment plant. And that's where the, most of the effort will go there to evaluate and be able to implement a solution that has been proven for a smaller community and like lesser flows like City of Sutter Creek.
And then Bill.
And Bill, right?
And Bill, of course. I mean.
Do you want to talk about?
And the city.
I think Bill also knows several of these installments and companies.
So Wallace Group, we're well aware of, we're actually teaming with them on another project down at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, and they're using a Cloisina plant. We've done a number of projects with Cloisina treatment plants. There's a handful of them operating now. They're very uniquely positioned to produce these. They have a, basically they turn it into a product that they improve over time and they have model numbers based on size. These are all packaged in stainless steel systems that are built off-site, brought out and basically plumbed in and commissioned. So it's provided both reduced cost. The operators like them. They're built well and they're, they're built for operators and they saves time on the schedule and field commissioning time because they're pre-assembled and water tested at their factory down in San Luis Obispo. RBI is, I agree, they're very well-recognized. We actually utilized them on your 2014 master plan update. We had them do a, a regulatory memo on this specific discharge situation. Regulations have evolved since then in some ways more streamlined, believe it or not, and they are well-positioned to take a look at it. So, you know, as we are developing the scope or the RFP requirements and what we wanted to see in an approach and what issues we wanted to see covered, we utilize the, our experience with your master plan, all the competing issues that we have made the such a struggle and made sure that respondents knew that we needed to cover these bases and we wanted to know who they were going to use and what their approach was for doing that to deal with all these separate puzzle pieces and then bring it together into a cohesive answer. And that's also why we had a project definition phase called out. We don't want to get into design until we know what the definition is, how all these interrelated pieces are going to affect that answer. And we have at least an evolved snapshot of what the schedule and the cost will look like. And then we go into detailed design, develop that further, get all the details in there, update those items again with, you know, review checkpoints by us in the city before we green light the next phase.
Earlier, the question came up about chlorine or UV? Are these Cloisina plants one or the other or both? What?
Either. So the core module is the MBR, the biological treatment and the filtration. And then the disinfection step, they build it at a separate skid. Then they customize that a little more for each project.
So if, if whatever decision is made about which is more best suited for us, they can supply that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it okay with everybody if we keep going in this manner?
Yeah, yeah.
I think we're not repeating much and.
Doing okay.
Is there anyone in the public that'd like to comment at this point? It looks like it's mostly staff.
I had a question. Um, I just was hoping you could speak to with regard to like the certainty and the risk of the funding and if we're getting loans and there's, we run into any economic or political instability and with, or grants, if like something gets defunded and yeah.
Yeah, like I said, it's, it's the next puzzle to attack, I think. Again, until we had a kind of an idea what we were going to build and how, it was a little bit hard to understand what the funding piece would be. And I think now we have a pretty good picture. We have an estimate, estimated range. Again, based on their valuation of the city's financial state. I Bank felt they could go, we could probably get a loan for 25 to 30 million. So I, right now I'm anticipating kind of a five to $10 million funding cap. And so it's, it's both sides. It's, it's managing the expenses to try to keep it towards the lower end as much as we can. And then it's looking for these other grants. And so again, this is a situation where I don't have a complete answer for you right now. It's, it's kind of a recognized risk. And we need to just go out and try to get the money and.
And then again, I think you already kind of spoke to this, but who, who, who will that onus fall on to, to manage it and keep it in that realm that, and, and then what happens if it doesn't? What happens if there's like something bad happens and it goes away?
I mean, if it doesn't, again, there are these checkpoints where we are going to have to look hard and say, yeah, we think we can get there or no, we need to stop. And again, the traditional alternative would effectively have been the same thing. We would have paid money out of pocket to do a design. And then we would have, and we would have been out of that money. We'd have a design sitting here on the desk and we would do a, an RFP and try to get a construction company. So what we're doing right now is we're trying to minimize some of that expense in that handoff. And and then we are able to, again, through this ESCO, which was the big thing that attracted me, is we can finance all of this over 30 years. So we don't have to, you know, pay several million dollars for design upfront and then start to pay for construction.
So Tom, does that mean you get a commitment for X level? And this is, you know, excuse me, but I'm not in this business. I'm not quite sure how it works. You get a $30 million commitment, say.
Yeah.
As the monies become due and you submit an invoice for 500,000, at that point, they issue a subsection of the 30 and from that moment on, we start paying interest on it or what?
No, I, I think they, they issue us the money and we put it in the bank and then we make payments on the contract as it happens.
That's how it goes, huh?
Yeah.
I wasn't.
So that was one of your questions.
Yeah.
And again, because we are, was my, one of my questions to Schneider, we're rolling all the design and this assessment stuff. That first bill and the construction contract is going to be a big bill.
Sure.
It's going to catch us, catch them up for the investment they've made to that point. So it's not, it's not 30 equal, it's not payments over 30 years of equal payments. It'll be.
Right.
As the work is.
That's just who we pay back.
Yeah.
That, you know, that, that's equal payments to us at some point.
Right, exactly.
And we start paying that back as soon as they put the money in our account?
Yeah, there was some amount of time, I think, before you had to start to pay, but yeah.
Okay.
And then day to day, is it, whose job is it to manage that the project is going right and that the money's there?
So it'll be there in the construction agreement. You know, Bill will be verifying that the work was done and Dan, they'll invoice us, we'll have a payment time and it'll, it'll go to the finance department and we'll pay it.
And then who's in charge?
I mean, ultimately I'm in charge, but I mean, again, it's a collaborative project.
And then what's the timeframe for the whole thing, you think?
I think we, we're looking at six to eight years in total.
Thank you.
The, one of the big issues.
The one of the big issues when Corolla was doing some initial planning was the INI. And as was is Snyder aware of of that issue and and what our alternatives might be to address it? I just I'm not asking you to go into detail on that, but just are is that been in the discussion and something that we're they're very aware of and was going to have to be dealt with or addressed?
It it is, they're definitely aware of it. It was pretty explicitly called out in the RFP and was a topic.
Okay.
As we met and it, you know, the right solution is going to be a balance of the city's continuing to tackle its INI and seeing how that's doing as we're progressing. The city has a large basin at the plant that can be hopefully refurbished and reused to.
That's where I want.
Yeah.
Corolla was talking about a what's the correct term of retention pond or?
Yeah, I've seen different names for it.
Yeah.
The yeah, the large equalization base.
Equalization.
One right under the.
Equalization and then we were talking about pumping up to a tank on the hill and and so I just want to make sure that that's all been discussed and and ready to be worked on.
Absolutely, and it was a key aspect of the the two proposers approaches that we spent time looking at and Q and A and the interview and so forth.
Is there any possibility in this? I might be totally way off base on this, but of a of a hybrid where we would use land discharge in the summer and and then tertiary for other parts of the year to to try to lower costs or is that even a, does that make any sense at all? And you don't have just.
Well, the the issue with the peaks affects the treatment. What you're speaking of now is kind of on the other end of it.
Well, I'm thinking typically now in the summertime, all of our secondary water is applied on on the Bowers property. And is that something that would be considered to make sense to continue in the in the summer months or?
You're going to produce with this plant a very high quality tertiary water.
Right.
That opens up a lot more use cases and you're going to want to maximize the use of that. The trick with the current practice is it requires a lot of winter storage and that reservoir has a large cost. So we want to decouple you from store.
Yeah, well, I'm not talking, yeah, that's I'm only talking about application in the summer. Of course, there is tailwater and that goes into it. Just something to think about.
Yeah, I think it's a it's a resource that can be distributed to customers that want it. It might have some value, you won't want to charge for it. This is all sort of, you know.
That that's on the table too.
Yeah.
Where where what might be our options to to use that Title 22 water?
Right.
Down the road.
Okay, Gold Rush Ranch is obviously the top candidate for that. And, you know, it need willing to invest in conveying it there.
Okay.
The surface water discharge is, you know, once you have a plant that can meet those limits, it's right there. You can just discharge it. You don't need to maintain infrastructure to get it out to other users. And it doesn't require storage or holding back any flow. If that makes sense.
We also are up against the expiration of the lease on the storage out there and the whole ARSA system.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Which is about the same timeframe we're talking about.
Of course, that fact plays heavily on, you know, making this the right decision.
Exactly.
I'm going to bite off kind of a a broad one and I'm going to let you guys pick which one you want to talk about first. I I just want a quick summary of how our existing plant will continue to operate as all of this happens. And I'm not sure this is the right time to do that, but what the phasing in is in that. And then I also want to talk about guaranteed maximum price and how it's not exactly the guaranteed maximum price and change orders.
Yes.
And what what impact the cost of materials can have on that after we get to phase three. So once we have our design and our guaranteed maximum price, if the stainless steel that this whole thing is encased in costs five times more, you know, what are we looking at?
Let me let me try a couple and then you guys can jump in. So sorry, the first question.
How? How? Yeah, what?
Yeah.
So we're going to just go.
So the idea, the idea is, and again, we interviewed both the companies, they had slightly different ideas. But the idea would be to bring in one of these packaged plants, probably put it up the hill, I think, a little bit and have it operating while we like, say, in the summertime, while we remove pieces of the current plant. So, I mean, the the puzzle pieces are definitely part of the design. That plant has to keep operating. You know, it's it operates at its slowest during the summer when it's not raining. So the I think the ultimate, and again, this is early, so the design's going to change. But the idea was to have two of these packaged plants in the final configuration. So potentially there'd be one there, it would be used and then it would be moved down to its final spot along with the second one.
That would only have to that would only have to treat the secondary during that that portion of it, though.
Right, it could operate, it doesn't have to meet tertiary requirements, it would still feed into ARSA.
Right.
So there's a lot some leeway there. Do you guys want to add to that or?
Just to continue with that, so what what part of our existing secondary plant will we still use, if any?
Sounds like it's being dismantled some.
There are, there's incentives or there's there's incentive on the whole part of the team to look at what assets could serve a purpose. And that's something, it's an aspect that Schneider presented in their approach. The treatment units themselves are obsolete, but you have tanks, concrete tanks that are still in pretty good shape despite their age that could be used for storage, sludge holding, a variety of other uses. You need tankage for the project and that is something that's highlighted in the scope and approach. You you'll find it in the early part of the scope to evaluate existing assets, primarily some of those process tanks and the EQ basin.
Wouldn't the rotoscreen still be used as a primary treatment?
Potentially, maybe. I mean, MBRs need a higher level of screening to protect the membranes, but it's often beneficial to have pre-screening.
Like a, yeah, like a pre-screen.
Maybe to treat any wastewater that's diverted to the EQ. So you get the screenings out before you go to EQ and then you pump it back through the fine screens to go into the plant. So those are all good ideas and they are acknowledged in the scope in various places as things that we'll look at.
So it's being considered.
Absolutely, and trying to reuse the existing site as much as possible rather than grading up the hill. An early question is, is is it going to work with FEMA? And so that's why that scope is there to get that hurdle out of the way and then know what you can use on the site. And it's just strategy for how to phase work, work in the summer, put one treatment unit in to deal with the flow so you can drain everything and demo it and sequence over time.
I did, just to be really clear. That's why we felt the FEMA consultant was so important because the the cheapest option is to use the land lower lower to the creek. And I think the team felt that Schneider had the best abilities to have that happen if it can happen. If we reach a point where it can't, it's potentially going to be a more expensive option. We have to move the plant up the hill. And, you know, that's potentially going to be costly. Up from where it is, I think nobody suggested all the way to the top, kind of halfway up the hill.
Any timeline on FEMA's response to what's going to be okay or not okay?
So all of this hopefully will be figured out in phase one, which we're hoping it's going to take no longer than 240 days. And that's where we can untangle all of these important, which FEMA is on top of the list.
And that. Sorry, go ahead, Julia.
Within that that 240 days, so you're talking, you know, six months out of this this timeline. Is there a rough, I have two questions actually. One, is there or will there be a timeline of goals set of at this date, we anticipate this much is going to be completed and this is going to be our cost. At this next point in another year and a half or six months down the line, this is how much we're going to have completed and this is what your cost will probably, you know, roughly be. Is there any type of foreseeable vision like that?
So thanks, Julia, for your question here. If I'm understanding your question here regarding the cost for the city over the different phases of the design. So each phase of design is associated with its own cost. Like, for example, in this phase one, it's going to be $550,000. And at the end of that phase, there will be, of course, a checkpoint and discussion, review process. Of course, there is very detailed the schedule that we have developed. It's more detailed for phase one because that's what the goal is right now. We don't know what phases two and three are going to be. We're hoping, you know, we have expectations and we have hopes to what they need to be or what they want it to be. But we still don't have them there. But yes, we have a very detailed schedule with costs associated, at least with phase one and the range of costs for phases, phase two, which is the 30 and 60% design. I hope that answers your question.
Yes. Yes, I understand you can't anyway. My next question kind of goes back to to city staff and personnel. With the upgraded technology and requirements with this potential new plant, what will be the requirements on that are our public works department team is going to have to look into? I mean, will there be training required? Will there have to be new hiring? How will how will the staffing and what will the staffing look like for this new plant? And is that is that expense, which I perceive there would be some, is that calculated also in the overall loan amount that we're looking at or trying to get?
So the the level of operation that we'll need is level three. So we have George's level two. So he would have to level up or the other guys would have to level up to to three. It doesn't matter who does it, just has to be somebody that's a level three and then everyone else can be two or one. But as long as there's one person's level three, then you're fine.
Okay.
Cost wise.
Was Corey not also being kind of groomed? Or in a position to move up? I know.
I mean, any of the guys can, they just have to pass the test.
Okay.
So, yeah, I currently I'm working with Jeff, like we're doing math questions all the time to try to get him to level up. He's going for a two. So if he passes that, he would go for a three. George says he's going to go for a three, so we're going to hopefully talk to him about that. But yeah, everybody's goal is to get up at least one level, so.
Will there be any required additional staffing needed for this plant besides what we have now?
There might be, I'm not not entirely sure about that. It'll depend on, you know, the level of operation that we're doing and whether we need, you know, 24/7 coverage or whether we can automate stuff. I mean, that's those are questions that are going to be way down the road, you know? I I'm not sure Bill has an idea about that.
Well, those unknowns I know are obviously what they are, the unknowns. But would that be part of the assessment? Wouldn't that be part of the assessment phase?
Yes, the the team that that is doing that phase can definitely estimate staffing requirements. I know that Cloisina has already given us estimates many times on other projects. It will also have a high level of automation, remote monitoring capability. That's with their offering, so that's something we're expecting. And then, of course, over time, you're you're moving away from having to maintain the ARSA system, so that should free up some resources as well.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, that answers my question.
Yeah, I think it'll be more of a reallocation of resources than a addition. There there may be some additional, but I think it would be more of a reallocation.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Yep.
I still want to get to that guaranteed maximum price question, but before that, as you can see, Moses and Bill, the five of us are not engineers, but we're highly engaged and can come up with a lot of questions. So during the first 240 days, as you guys come up with this, do we hear from you at the end? And I think that might just be fine with me. I'm just, you know, what what expectation do you have of dragging us along with you through the initial plan?
I mean, I'll certainly be giving you guys updates. I mean, if you guys approve this tonight, you're approving phases one and two. Right, and then, you know, the the next approval of council would be the construction agreement. But yeah, certainly be giving you guys updates along the way and if you know, you guys are a knowledgeable group, I think Bill and Moses are seeing that. So. And then on the GMP discussion. So and again, I I learned a lot going through these negotiations and, you know, contracts are for the worst case. You know, we put in a lot of stuff in there that hope you never use. The idea is we get this GMP and we've defined everything and we've thought of everything and we stick to that. There's stuff in the contract for change orders. The the idea behind design build is everybody's motivated to minimize change orders. You know, Schneider has guaranteed this price, so they don't they don't try to generate change orders. It's not how they make money. But if something changed or the city, you know, wanted to try to add something new, that there's a process there and the contract for that. So I think we spent a fair amount of time negotiating some of the change order language and Schneider kept telling us it's very rare that you're going to use this stuff, but but we put it in there.
Yeah, it was a little confusing, actually, at at a couple of points and maybe you can speak to it, Moses, where it said, you know, if if you're having that conversation and you haven't quite nailed it down yet, we're going to continue to do the work anyway. And I kind of scratched my head thinking, well, how the heck are you going to do the work if you haven't agreed on exactly what it's going to cost? But maybe it's the fact that it doesn't happen very often or something, I don't know.
So most of the times, these are contract language and we recognize things go by contract, right? Practically, I'm not aware of any project personally that we really have stopped on practically with with all of our clients, whether on the wastewater or on all of the other projects that we do across the spectrum. We work with municipal cities, special districts and all type of projects, not only wastewater. And I'm not aware, I'm not aware of of any any of these situations or cases. Exactly. Yes. It's the most thing, it's the most expensive expensive things in construction for a contractor like us to stop working, frankly. So our motivation is not to stop working unless there is a you know, out of control reason that we have to.
Specifically, does the cost of materials, a major change in the cost to make your materials change the GMP?
Yeah, well, there's a clause in there and that was a topic of discussion. So again, Moses can talk to this, but I think once we once we get to the GMP, they they identify expensive items, long lead items. The Cloisina plant is probably going to be one of the more expensive ones. They would order those right away. If something happened with supply chains, you know, you mentioned stainless steel as an example. There's a clause in the contract that if the price varies of 5%, then that's then Schneider eats that, that's part of the GMP. If it goes above that, then the city, we can we can evaluate an alternative. We could decide we're going to stick with that or if something really shot out of control, we could terminate the contract. And Schneider agreed that you know, for material cost charge, I was worried that material costs shoot up. And then we also have to pay them overhead on that increased cost. So they agreed to keep the the overhead and profit to the original cost estimate. So we are paying, if a material cost increase, we would more than 5%. The city could agree to absorb that cost, but we wouldn't have to pay an additional markup on that higher cost. So it was a little bit of a concession.
Yeah, because somewhere early on in the contract, like page five or something like that, it says that the long lead time material payments are not included in the contract price.
Right.
So they're.
Yeah, so that's a different, that's a different scenario, I think. And again, that idea is mostly the solar and the battery. And yes, to your question, that would be paid outside of the contract and would not be included in the GMP.
Okay. Okay, these are other things. Once we get further along into.
Yeah, I think I think the language on the contract is it says specifically for solar and battery. The long lead items and not for the wastewater treatment plants or mainly for the solar. Let's put it that way.
I think we added that in the the rev that came out later, the second version.
Correct.
That it specifies that?
Yes.
Speaking of materials, there's a couple of places in the contract and I I can find them, I marked them, but that'll take forever. Where the storage and insurance of the long lead items and materials is the responsibility of the city.
Yeah.
Are we going to put this stuff and how are we going to keep it safe?
So we looked into it a little bit and actually, Moses, I haven't finished the conversation. Schneider has insured warehouses. And I actually talked to council member Swift if there might be a barn or something we could store some material on. It's not sure. I'm not sure it's going to pencil out because there's a shipping charge that's probably more than the storage charge. And so we probably only want to ship things once if we can. So we may just pay Schneider to store it at their facilities. Because we need to ensure, make sure it doesn't get broken, doesn't get impacted by the weather.
How local are those facilities?
Be in Texas, I think.
You're asking about the location of these. We have multiple storage facilities across the nation, so what I was told, these are in Texas. However, just to clarify this item a little bit here, that's mainly for the solar panels. For the long lead items for the solar panels, and there's a reason behind it, which I think the council have approved four weeks ago. Because of some incentives, they might be affected, which is incentive tax, right, that are going to be affected before end of the year. So these panels, eventually, they need the title need to be transferred to the city as part of the requirements for that. Incentives for the city to be qualified for that before December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
But so Moses, we would transfer the title, but they could still be.
In Texas.
Yes. If if that's the option, the city likes to go by, yes, it can. They can stay in our warehouse.
And it was a lot of a lot of pallets and I think it was going to save us ten thousand dollars, maybe, so let's see.
So this kind of contract, I would never have never had to sign a fifty million dollar contract. But in the case of it, I would defer only to an attorney and not even, I mean, and have them give me feedback on this. What are we committing to financially with this?
Yeah, so again, five hundred fifty thousand for phase one. And if we say looks good, then the next phase, I think, was about two point two million for design. And if that looks good, then we take that two point seven million and we roll it into the financing. If it doesn't look good, then the city has to pay that and we end up with a design and we walk away.
So. But we don't know a hundred percent we get the loan from my bank.
We'll know by then.
Yeah, we'll know by then and we have done.
Doing that now in parallel with whatever is going on in phase one.
But if we approve this now, we're on the hook for the half million dollars.
Correct.
But we don't know that we're getting the loan for sure.
Correct. We have money in the wastewater enterprise fund.
We have the money today.
Cover this.
Yeah.
But we can't find out. That we're getting.
So they.
Prior to signing the contract.
They kind of prequalled us like a prequalified mortgage, so they have all of our information. And, you know, I think they said they could definitely do like twenty five million and maybe more.
Okay, and then as far as the money to make it up after that, if there if we're looking at grants or whatnot and there's a delay of. Well, worst case scenario, if there's a trouble getting the money, but best in best case scenario, obviously, we have it all. But if we are relying on grants and there's, say, a delay in the dispersal of the grant money, how does that come into play?
So again, we would, we're not going to have to pay out twenty five million upfront.
No, no, I mean, like in seven years, say, the the last bill comes due and the grant money is delayed or.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're just going to have to manage that. I mean, we're going to have to be working on these grants during the design process. A lot of times you you need to have applied for the money before you start construction. So like we have this window before we incur those expenses.
Okay. Cool. I have one last question that I didn't throw in on that list of questions that was up earlier. On page ninety seven, it, excuse me, page ninety five. Under the topic related work. It talks about examples or the city may need to have separate contracts for construction or operation. What would an example of that look like? And how does that fit in, given that we have an overall contract with Schneider?
So I have that in front of me. I believe that is acknowledging that the city has the right. To say something else breaks at the plant and they need to bring a contractor in to fix that. While this team is out there building their project, that it's language utilized to require coordination. You have two different contractors working at the site. It's not meant to anticipate that we're breaking out some of this work and and responsible for it through another mechanism.
Okay, I get I get it because while while the site is, you know, potentially being constructed. We still have to have an operational site. So. If we if the city needs to have its own contract for construction, that's for our own site, not for the new one.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bill.
Derek, are you comfortable with this?
Yes.
That's okay.
Team that's going to manage this, we've reviewed this extensively. There are risks that you have to take, but. The wastewater treatment plant has to be dealt with. And this is from a legal standpoint, appropriate. We've reviewed this extensively. There's risks in everything we do, but we think these have been accounted for. This is a special process the legislature has given us to utilize efficiencies and cost savings to do exactly what we're trying to do. So. We did we did look at that before we went down this route at Tom's request.
How's everybody feel about a brief recess? I think we're.
Sounds good.
Got a long ways to go.
We at the halfway mark or just kidding?
I don't know. All right, how about ten minutes?
Thanks, boss. We get a break.
Yeah.
So it must sound these colors, huh?
Oh, yeah, no one did.
People are going to say that, eh? Well, then. Well, next one, well, they already got it. Donovan from LA Berkeley, Ellen from Berkeley, Sam from Boston. Now, I was at Leon. So this big one. Yeah. So got my son blacking them. Started off.
I put too many on the slide.
Oh, I found out what the water was.
What was it?
It's pumping from the basement down.
Can I get to your questions?
Yeah, no, I got I got I got a couple about the resolution.
What was that? I probably think it's set on.
It's a labor, very labor intensive.
I'm looking at all this yesterday. Yesterday, it's my day to write it off and completely look through.
Like.
You talk about irony.
Not in there.
That's so ironic.
So I tried I tried her a little bit and then.
Yeah.
Then he came over.
And you're working on the new sewer system.
Question? Yeah. It was packed with full circle.
Yeah.
But it dumped it in the trash.
Right, me too. I'm just starting fourteen little cup first that pulls off because Lottie's tired lifting up the trash and having the bag fall. Because I'm not making grease.
Oh, no. Put it on jar.
I promise I put it in a jar. Yeah. I just kind of let it cool on. I try not to leave any grease down. Yeah.
I see.
I as a. That is the worst thing you can do to our sewer.
To the sewer, yes.
Well, any solids are has to be. Okay, it's either you take them out of the sewage stream or we take them out of the sewage stream down there and it goes into goes through the rotor screen.
Even when the twins were neighbors. I have a small can, small can trash cans.
Okay.
And that's all they use. When we recycle and.
Vegetable vegetable scrap and banana peels and that and well, you don't never put.
Banana peel, terrible.
And a disposers, but.
Or asparagus.
But I don't even have a disposer. I just have a screen and I take everything.
Good concept. We did, you know.
First.
Ten years ago, you had your. I have one of those big black. Yeah.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Julia, are you ready to come back?
Yep, ready, go.
All right, I'm going to call us back into session. I think we're going to keep going where we left off and Dan, you're up.
Okay, so I have three kind of financial questions on the contract itself. And we can take them one at a time. And again, I don't have a lot of experience in this, so. One of them has to do with a thousand bucks a day on liquidation damages, liquidated damages. And, you know, I have managed a lot of contracts and stuff, but not construction. And for a forty million dollar contract, that didn't seem like much. So I was wondering, is that standard? How do you measure the risk where a thousand dollars is going to cover the risk? Before you even get anywhere near that period of time, vis a vis what's going to be happening with the old plant? What might it cost us additionally if this thing isn't done in time? What if we get fined, blah, blah, blah? Thousand bucks a day wouldn't go very far in my mind.
Understood. It is a number, a round number that's meant to represent the theoretical cost of a delay. Sometimes you have a project that has a tight regulatory deadline. You have, you know, there's a large cost, you can even estimate what it is. We don't have that in this case. As part of the project development, there'll be a permitting process. And the ARSA situation will continue to evolve as well, so there may become more clarity there. But as it stands, it's it's a number that's. You know, sort of an estimate of just general impacts, additional staff time, cost of hydro science. Tom and others to stay on top of the project.
Understood. So Derek, from your perspective on this liquidated damages thing, setting it at a thousand bucks today. If something were to happen down the road, indicating that, you know what, it's going to be. We're going to be six months late and it's going to cost the city a lot more than a thousand bucks a day. Is there an opportunity to revisit that at the time? Or are we done when we sign up for a thousand bucks a day?
Well, this is the this is the agreement we're, you know, I mean, there might be an ability to do an amendment. But right now, this is, I mean, this is kind of.
This is it.
Package of deal we're going with.
Understood. And from your perspective, Moses, has it ever has it been a problem at all in in this kind of thing? Is it? Does it cover a little towns or are you always on time?
I can speak to my experience and the projects I'm aware of, maybe I am directly or indirectly involved with. But I'm not aware of any projects, whether on the wastewater or non wastewater. Again, we have done over a thousand projects nationwide. I'm not aware of the full one thousand projects, but all the projects I'm aware of, I'm not, I don't recall we have paid LDs to anyone. We don't want to pay LDs.
It never became an issue. No, and I appreciate that. And Bill, I appreciate your answer. The second financial question I had was on profit and overhead at at twenty five percent. And, you know, I did some research and, you know, that's that's in the ballpark. People do that. It's not a deal necessarily and what I was wondering. Um, it's not a deal necessarily. And what I was wondering is. Did anybody talk about the opportunity of maybe twenty percent with an additional five if you came in five, uh, ten percent? Under the guaranteed, uh, cost or something like that. So we've got some incentive built into the thing. Where you get more profit if we're able to do it for a less amount of money. Or, and time, money and or time. So skin in the game kind of thing.
Right, so our skin in the game, the way I'm going to answer this question, our skin in the game is to come up with a design and a solution that is constructable within the city's budget. Let's put it that way. Um. I think maybe the approach you're talking about is geared more toward the traditional design it, bid it, you know, design, bid, build. Um. The design build is a total different mechanism where you will get the guaranteed maximum price and you will know this early on. Um, and as I mentioned, that's our goal to understand the financial and make a project within those financial. Uh, now. If, of, you know, there's guaranteed maximum price and afterwards the city gets some extra money, we will not take that, we will not take that money. You will keep that money. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, fair enough. And I, and I appreciate that the, the design build is a different, uh, model. Um, so yeah, I, I appreciate that. Um. The final thing I wanted to bring up was we recently. In, in town, uh, passed, um, a measure where we get an extra one percent sales tax. That stays in the city of Sutter Creek for items, you know, that are purchased and delivered to Sutter Creek. I wanted you to make sure that you're aware of that because on this project, if we're buying a lot of materials and the, the destination address is here. We want to make sure that the billing happens appropriately so that we're able to gain full advantage of this measure that we passed last year.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good one to know.
Yeah, uh, we will keep this in mind and I don't think, uh, I don't think that that's, that's an issue and I'll make sure this is communicated with our team.
Right. We're excited about that because as the project moves forward, there's gonna be an opportunity to communicate, um, with the citizens about how that, you know, measure P is also serving us during this build. Um, so that's a, that's a win-win. That's all I had right now.
And Mason and Tom, you can make sure that, you know, it's worth, whether we have to order it or, you know, however the acquisition is made.
Yep, and just looking through these list of questions, I think we've addressed a lot of them. There were some very specific ones. Um.
I have a very broad one for Moses. Um, I, I feel like you have demonstrated both when we met six months ago and, and now, um, that Schneider. Uh. Comprehends that, you know, that our limited budget is one of the biggest definitive factors of this project. Um, we also, you know, you and Bill have both talked about all the complexities and the puzzle pieces and the, I'm assuming part of that is ARSA and that whole situation. But in your mind, besides the budget constraints, what is the defining? Challenge of this project here?
So I will start with, I'm confident with. Uh, if I may answer this by, I'm confident of the really partnership that has been demonstrated with the city, right, and the city staff and Bill. Um, also, I'm confident of the team that we put together around us. Um, to answer your question, I think probably the biggest ticket item here coming back is the FEMA, which is the plant is in the floodplain. And that's why we're putting a lot of emphasis on this during phase one and in the early stages of phase one to understand where we need to gear our efforts to. Is it, uh, no, no, maybe to build? The similar footprint or in the same footprint as where the wastewater treatment plant is and we have to all of us, uh, shift gears and start thinking in other. Um. Creative ideas. Uh, or maybe the answer is simpler, hopefully, and, uh, we're able to put all our efforts to make it happen within the existing footprint.
And the FEMA determination will make a big difference in whether we're in the lower or higher end of the cost range.
Yes.
What, what is the timeline for that kind of decision to be made by FEMA and evaluating, um, the site location?
So it is definitely in phase one, uh, of the design. Um, I don't have the schedule handy right now, but I think it is, we're hoping within the next. Eight weeks or within eight weeks after we, we start our efforts, eight to ten weeks.
Yeah, that, that reminds me, there was a question about the schedule being marked a reference schedule. And again, I think, I think the two hundred and forty days is in the contract. The, the detail of the schedule, it, it was a real schedule, I think, with real dependencies, but the point is. It has flexibility, so if we need to move some things around, it's not part of, it's not locked into the contract as a definitive schedule right now.
Okay, but, but it is representative of our hopes and dreams and.
Absolutely.
Knowledge right now.
Absolutely, and this is what, what the schedule that we will go by. However, as things progresses and it's very dynamic, uh, approach for designing, uh, development of these projects. If we see a benefit to maybe do different steps at the same time as we move forward. Based on an outside feedback, could be from a water board, could be from, uh, uh, from FEMA, then this, this will allow us to do this rather just sticking into a piece of paper to say, no, you can't, and then you have to follow. To follow that. So again, it just gives us more ability to do things in a more streamlined approach.
And the other question about Riverside County, again, we started with a contract that was heavily negotiated. That was an oversight, um, so we're gonna talk to Schneider about changing that to Amador.
I had a feeling.
I saw that.
The, the good news is we wanted to start with a battle-tested agreement template in a public works environment. From a reference that had worked with them and it just seemed like the best approach. Saved a lot of time.
Right.
Do we know any much about the site that we're building on and whether or not there was much mining done there or their shafts? Is there soil contamination? Was there any milling and could that come to be a problem?
It's been the, the treatment plant since the forties, so.
Well, but aren't we?
We are testing, we're doing some boring to just understand the ground conditions, not so much about mining, I think, but just. Stability of the hillside and how much rock we're gonna encounter.
Cause I, I thought we were actually building it like next to it. Is that true or?
So we're trying to build in the flat part along the creek.
Okay.
But again, uh, the FEMA plane could be very close. They're, you know, we could. I don't, I don't know if there's a chance they're gonna say it doesn't come over the, the, the wall. Um, we could maybe reinforce the wall. Kind of depends exactly where it comes out, I think.
But that's another big unknown.
Well, that's part of this FEMA discussion we're talking about.
Yeah.
And then there was.
We have like the hundred year, I mean, we must have the hundred year floodplain.
Yes, we, we pulled the maps, uh, and that was part of the RFP package. Uh, as a starting point, and so the approach in general looks to update that with, uh, better modeling. Uh, because there's a sort of a boundary between an established floodway at the very upstream end of the wastewater site. And a more generically identified floodplain downstream of that. And so I think part of Avila's approach, the FEMA consultant, is to improve the definition of that, do some updated modeling, present that to FEMA. And establish better mapping there to have that baseline laid out. And then we'll know if the, the flat area is high enough that we can say we're above that. And if not, what do we want to do to mitigate it as it feasible to? Um, there was also comment about surveying and. Um. Again, we, we wanted to make sure not just the area of the plant was surveyed, but the entire access road because we think. We're gonna have to up, upgrade the road for construction, so. Just to get equipment in there.
Hey, um. Anyone in the public? Is there anyone on Zoom, Mary?
So. I, I got a, just a couple of questions about the, uh, resolution itself. On the second page, well, starting at the bottom. Uh, we're talking about Sequo. And then. The, on the top, very sentence on the top page, it says. Is any modifications or changes to the WWTD? I, I, should that be WWTP? Okay, and then. Pardon me?
That was my mistake.
Oh, okay. And then, uh, while I'm on, on typos, uh, down in that last, be it further resolved. That says the execution of contacts. I think it should be contracts, yeah. Uh, but, but anyway, my question about that, it says any modification or changes to the WWTP. Would have no potential environmental impact on the. Environment. So. Is that just in regards to this? Design portion or are we gonna run it? So there, there will be Sequo questions in the, uh, construction or the. Before the design is approved or we, can you kind of just weigh in on that? How the, the.
Sure, the Sequo findings are just for this item.
Right, okay.
Contract that will provide for a planning and design.
So there's no Sequo involved?
Well. Sequo is kind of a continuum, but here we're simply doing design work.
Right.
Assessment work.
Right.
One is assessment, phase two is design. We will have to do full environmental as part of project in that, so.
It is that.
Resolution just talks about your approval tonight.
Right.
Of this process.
Right, okay. So down the road is the, that sequel work, is that? Um, a deliverable that's for Snyder?
Yeah.
Okay, it's in the scope work. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
There will be, and you will have to, with the council, do a sequel analysis that we will present.
Okay.
And I think that was something that was in the edits too. If there's. Some sort of clearance we have to get for some kind of financing, then that would be included too.
I had a question, just, it's more of a general construction question. So the, the surety bond, uh, on construction that you guys take out. It's like an insurance policy or something for us. Is there a like insurance policy for us on phase one and two?
No, usually on design work, there's no. It's, it's only design work, so, you know, desktop work, so the, you, usually there's no insurance for, for design work.
Well, there, there's errors and omissions or insurance.
Yeah, there is admission insurance, but not.
It's, it's a, yeah, for design, it would be insurance, uh, general liability, that's.
General liability, correct.
And then for a contractor, that's when the bonds come into play.
Got you. Thank you.
Any more questions?
So we're gonna change the profit and overhead to twenty, right?
Aaron, you got that in the minutes?
Hey, Bill, you've talked a lot about the, the oversight. Um, and with all the, keeping every, herding all the cats. But, uh. In the contract on page nine. It says the city's representatives shall have the power to act on behalf of the city for all purposes under this contract, including for the purpose of approving the design. I'm assuming that that approval is a, like a team effort.
It is.
Yeah, so.
I wouldn't want to do that alone, but I will abide my recommendation, Tom. And we'll be sitting in a lot of, you know, we'll get a design deliverable individually review, compile our comments, go meet. Um, ultimately, the right product for you isn't just one that I think is right, it's one that operations and maintenance is comfortable with. Um, that's how we would want to do every project.
Right.
And I, we didn't really talk about it, but Grant Reynolds was involved in the interviews and. And also, uh, I don't know if you guys know A Quality, which consults with us on operations.
Right.
Um, so Chris.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're just gonna help shepherd the process and provide our own design expertise and really scrutinize things.
It just sort of struck me, boy, that's a lot of responsibilities to throw on Bill's shoulders.
There's reality in sort of how it's worded in the contract, but yeah, uh, that way it's simple in an agreement, but would definitely be a group effort. Okay.
Anybody else?
I have, I have just one last. So when, when you get to the design phase. Um, the assessment and the project definition, um, you know, and description in phase one. I'm, I'm imagining that you already have prototypes of designs that could just be altered. Or will during the assessment and the design phase, will you be starting from scratch?
Yes, the design, and these type of projects, they are very custom. It is case by case, so. Um, it will be, uh, it will be from scratch. However. The city already has a set of data. The city, there is the master plan. There is, uh, some testing data for the, uh. Um, the raw sewage, uh, criteria coming in. There is the report, the project report that has been done a year ago. So there are some sets of data and there is the asphalt, of course. So we're going to look into all of these reports and evaluate. So I don't want to call it from scratch to scratch, but. Um, um.
You're, you're also dealing with technology that's been proven and, and.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, I was just curious of how, how lengthy the design process would really take. If through the assessment and, like you said, you already have some data. Um. With, are there prototypes or examples of designs that would be taken and then modified to our specific needs? Or do you? Stretch it out in the design process and say we're, we have to start from scratch? That's what I meant, starting from scratch. Listen, what kind of design?
Yeah, un- understood. And especially in this design phase, for this specific, uh, purpose for the city, there's two different, uh, aspects into the design. There's the regulation part, which we believe that's going to, um. That's the most probably time consuming and figuring out the, uh, environmental and the applicable, uh, regulations dealing with the water board and other, uh, regulation agency. And then.
Understood.
There's the other engineering side of things that, yes, we working with our, um. Um, internal engineering team with our engineering partner Wallace and working with the Clausina. We have some basis of, uh, how the system should work and how we can customize it for the city. So we need to work on, on both of those somewhat in parallel.
Sounds good.
Just to add, um, I mentioned I was working with Wallace on another project, Cal Poly. That one, much like this one, has a very, uh, challenging budget constraint. So we went through, uh, a lot of value engineering and it was a design build like this one, progressive design build. Get the contractors, estimators and schedulers, people that are used to procuring materials, all working together to figure out where we can fine tune. And customize the design to get the most value out of the site, bring some of the big ticket items down in cost. Uh, just a lot of creativity so that, I'm sure that process will be critical here. And that's where a good part of the customization comes in, is just making sure we're building enough and not too much. And also working creatively on the site, uh, and staging the construction around operations. That's where a lot of the site-specific thinking needs to happen and, and part of what we were looking at when we evaluated proposals and teams.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Moses.
Um. Just a couple other, they, they may not amount to anything, but I wrote it down, so I'm gonna ask. So. It says somewhere that the city's rep will be responsible for holding subcontractors' meetings around scheduling. And will have the final word. And that made me scratch my head. So why would the city's rep be doing that? And that's on A one dash fifty-two F. On, on the first contract that was sent out, and I don't know that it matters, but it didn't seem.
I think it was on scheduling, it was only on scheduling between subcontractors and, um.
And I think it was just a tie breaking mechanism.
Oh, if, if somebody's coming in and you got somebody else coming in and you say, well, I don't know, it just, it just seemed weird.
But Schneider's responsible for, for holding the detailed other meetings and things that is just only around this one issue, I think.
Around sub?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, and I could be wrong, but A one dash 51 and 52, those pages, letters B and D seem to be talking about the same risk. And maybe I don't understand it, but I read them twice and I couldn't figure out what the difference was in the risk. And I don't know if it's worth taking a look at it. If we're redundant, maybe that doesn't matter. But if we're saying two different things about the same deal, that could matter. So it's page A dash 51 and 52, and it's letter B and D. I don't remember what that is. My notes says. Maybe Bill or Moses.
Yeah, might take a little studying to fully understand the nuances of the two. This is sort of general public works type contract template language that I'm sure that Riverside used and we brought over. Again, battle tested, but this, these are sort of remote scenarios.
Yeah, it, it seemed that way. I just, you know, sometimes those are the things that come back and bite you and say, well, we didn't think it was a big deal. And then you end up and the stuff hits the fan.
Understood. We'll take a second look at it and just make sure.
Yeah, just. There either, you know. A dash 51 and 52, letters B and D.
I mean, D is talking about separate contractors, which isn't a part of our plan. So if, I think if only we come to that, that might come into play.
Okay. Versus Schneider.
Yeah. I mean, we're intending to keep it all under Schneider, so point of contact, so point of responsibility. So I think D is just providing the city some flexibility if for some reason we need to break something out or we have, yeah.
Okay, that doesn't sound risky to me with, with that explanation in mind. Thank you. All right, I quit.
Any other questions from council? Anyone else? Mason, Will, Dan, Mia, Aaron. I guess this would be the time to consider a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make that motion. And I'll second that motion.
Right, there's a motion and a second. Aaron, can you please do a roll call?
Yes, council member circ.
Aye.
Council member Riordan.
Aye.
Council member, councilman.
Aye.
Council member Swift.
Aye.
Council member Faist.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. And thank you for allowing this seat. So I appreciate it. I'll go back to my seat.
Congratulations, everybody, on a lot of hard work.
Yes. A lot of homework, a lot of investigation, a lot of risk. And I think the confidence in the team and the answers that are provided tonight helped me out a, a whole lot. And let's move forward.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. My work's cut out for me.
Okay, item 10, mayor and council member reports. I dare you. Dan?
Well, just very quickly, as Tommy indicated, A C T C is going through their annual funding on local projects. And the cutoff road up to Eureka that we paved last year is on the final list and looks like it will be approved next month. Lord Willen and the creek don't rise.
Thank you.
It's on our list and was one of many, or six projects.
Julia?
No.
Jim?
No.
Susan?
I don't have a report, but I did, if we're taking request items for future agendas. I've just been hearing a lot about the new casino in Plymouth and the water there. And I thought that we maybe should, I don't know exactly our involvement in the water agency in there. And then the city of Plymouth, it's my understanding that they vote on the water to sell to the casino. And then somehow, and I'm not exactly familiar, I don't, I, I don't know how then the water. I always thought it was the water came from A W A. But there's some sort of vote going on with the city of Plymouth and it's a massive amount of water. I've heard 270,000 gallons a day. Think that the original intention was that they would drill wells, but they're not finding that amount of water on that property.
They have a little bit of insight. Yeah, it doesn't really impact us. Plymouth is a wholesale customer, so they buy the water from A W A and then they sell it to people. So they would be the contact for the casino.
Yeah, so that, so I get, so that makes sense. But I'm wondering if we should right now have a liaison to the water agency for future, like if they're, because I can't remember exactly what the A W A head said when he was here, but that there was some sort of pending moratorium dependent on storage. And it just seems like it could have a large impact on future development.
Because, you know, so Larry was here, they have 70 million in capital projects underway to increase treatment capacity at Tanner, among other things.
So we don't need to be concerned.
I don't think so. I think this is an issue between the casino and Plymouth. And, and like you said, they're trying to draw wells and any impact those walls would have.
So you're not concerned about future development here with all that water going there?
In terms of capacity, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure. So I understand your question now. I don't know how they accounted for that in terms of the well serves, you know, like, like Larry was here, he was talking about how they were tracking conditional well serve. And then when you go to development, it's
Yeah, that's, so that's, I just, maybe I'll just look into it personally. But that's my concern is I think that possibly that hadn't been asked for because the project being sovereign hadn't asked for a well serve because they intended to use wells for the water. I just thought it was worth mentioning.
I'll, I'll try to find out someone.
Jim?
Yeah.
Okay, city attorneys report. Future agenda items. I think we covered that.
Sorry, we meant to take that off the agenda because it is covered in number 10, as was pointed out.
It's okay. I called you Will. We're even. Information and correspondence? Nope. Okay, we are adjourned.
Amen. Thank you.